Exactly six o'clock. Exactly six o'clock. Call to water, let me take the roll call. Jan?
Here.
Lee?
Yep.
Laurel?
Yes, hi.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
Leslie?
Leslie?
Lindsay.
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 I'll blame it on my computer. Lee? We got that.
Jay?
Yep.
Bob? Let's go. Uh, we had a hit up on the meeting minutes. Last meeting. Laurel, you were...
Okay, wait, all right. Usually we have who's gonna call to order. A motion.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah. I make the motion.
Second.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
Okay. Uh, how many people got the minutes a week and a half ago?
I did.
Yeah.
I, I did, but I, I did, but I didn't print them and then they seemed to disappear. I had to have Dossi send me new ones today.
And I, I, I didn't get them until just...
They came very early.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't mind the early, early ones.
Right.
And I'm gonna go back and check the distribution on the one I got two weeks ago.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Because I think she has two email addresses. One's a Gmail and one's a EDU. So that might have something to do with it.
Yeah.
She sent it out, you mean?
I don't know. I do know her preference is the Gmail one for any future correspondence.
Well, having said that, does anyone have any questions on the...
She prefers that.
Yeah.
Comcast.
Yeah, the one that's not for EDU.
Oh, okay. Yeah, now hopefully. Okay, I can't put, hopefully one of them next time. Oh, wait. So. Minutes of November, see?
I did have one thing. I, just a correction on the spelling of the name Tibbetts. It's T.I.B.B.E.T. T.I.B.E.T.S. Rather than I.
Yeah.
And also, I, I don't have the minutes right in front of me, but I, and I just got them today. But there was, um, a little difference in what the procedure would be for when Vanguard, reports are sent online. I had put in both Michelle Beegan's information. She gave me all her information and also Mary Lou's. So I requested that the reports go to Mary Lou first and then also a copy to myself and Michelle. But, and pointed out that if it came to me, because this had to be done in line, that I would give them to Mary Lou and then she would distribute them. So that was one difference from the minutes.
And those, those reports are only quarterly anyway, right? So they're only...
And then there's the annual, the annual report, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not the treasurer's report.
And that would go for the same for the quarterly reports and the annual report and the prospectus, which is sent out usually in January. But it would all be, uh, online.
You're not receiving them, Kathy? You don't...
I haven't received anything yet, but we're not due for the quarterlies right now.
Yeah.
Okay. So you, you wanted to be, I still don't know. How, how do you want us to change the minutes?
Are the minutes, I think, don't, don't, don't the minutes say come to me and then I would send them to Mary Lou and Michelle? Or Mary Lou's the treasurer, so they should come to Mary Lou as I designated.
Yeah.
Kathy Correa...
On the, on the application, but...
There's a new password and she set up preference view to receive reports electronically. Then it says Kathy Correa will share reports with Michelle, Mary, Mary...
But it should say that Mary Lou will share reports with the board and with Michelle.
So, in other words, does, um, does Mary Lou have the new password?
Yeah, I gave Mary Lou the new password and...
Yeah.
And she'll share it with you too, or yes? So instead of you, she share, you sharing it with Mary Lou, she will share it with you?
No, Mary Lou will share the reports that she receives with the board and primarily with the town treasurer, Michelle Beegan.
Yeah, okay. All right. And the new treasurer too, you mean? Okay.
So Kathy, do you get a copy too? Separate or just part of the board?
Could be just part of the board, but it very well may be separate because in order to be able to fill out the forms and change all the designations, I had to give every, my social security number, all my contact information. Um, you know, everything, my mother's maiden name, the whole. So God only knows how it actually will come, but it's gonna come to somebody somewhere. And whoever gets it will share it with everybody else.
Yeah. We'll just have to wait till the end of the year and see what happens.
See who gets what.
Yeah.
Hi, William. Head of the G W. I believe it was... I thought that's how it's spelled. Yeah, it's she wins, all right. I'll, I'll change that. It's under replacement of tree. It's on us. Third page. Okay, good, fine. Where you going? Is that under my, all right. I'll make these corrections and send the question to, um, Nancy. And ask if she wants me to forward it to, um, I don't know. If she's been doing that or not. Okay. Oh, we need to approve it?
Yeah. Any further discussion on the minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes as amended?
I make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Decca? Jan?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
AKA Lindsay? Lee?
You've done it twice.
Okay. Jay?
Yes.
Bob?
Good.
It's important, love.
You double.
Yeah. You're both twice.
Yeah.
Mary Lou, you're next.
Okay, thank you. Um, I sent, I, I sent it a little early too. Did everybody get the, um, the monthly Bartholomew that I sent?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah, that's, that's it. And, um, had some emails with Chuck Patterson at Bartholomew. Um, um, Bob knows this, um, because I asked him when it would be a good time for him to, them to come. They wanna do their, their semi-annual review. Um, and it's been decided that they'll do it next month at our next meeting. Um, Chuck will either be there in person or on Zoom. I, I think it'll depend on the weather. But regardless, he'll be at the meeting. So he can be, he can be on the agenda. He'll, he'll decide whether he's gonna come in person or, um, be on Zoom, um, you know. And if he, when he, once he lets me know he's gonna be on Zoom, I'll send him the link. So, um, anyway, so that's gonna happen at next month's meeting. And, um, I guess I have a question, but I can save it for the end of the meeting because it has nothing to do with the treasurer. Um, and, um, but, um, that's all I have about the treasurer. Okay, treasury report.
Okay, uh, on, on the Bartholomew report? You know, made an executive decision. I thought it would be better to kick off the year with the review of the Bartholomew report as opposed to ending the year when we wanna settle a lot of things. So it's a new start. They were willing to come this month or next month.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, I also have...
December is always budget meetings, so.
Right. Uh, so we'll start the meeting next month with, uh, you know, after the call to order, we'll do the...
Yeah, and he's, I think he's coming by himself. He's gonna present by himself. He's not, Kathleen isn't coming.
Uh, I, I have a question on not necessarily the treasurer's report, but not included in the treasurer's report and all of the files that you keep copies of, is the new, uh, account that we have with the, I'm trying to remember the name of it. Oh, the Riden funds?
That's not an account.
But it's funds we have access to, right?
Yes.
So it is a separate bank account in TD Bank.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's same to the state aid fund, correct? We don't...
No.
Who keeps that account?
It's, I mean, just the people who are on the account. It's, it's not the same as stated, state aid. I have to put everything through, through the town. Anyway, they wire the money to the town and the town puts it in the account. With the Ryan Reardon Fund, it is just a separate account at TD Bank, completely separate from the town.
Okay.
And we're not signers on that. I, that, that's the people who started that and collected the money for, raised the funds and managed the funds. That was all allowed by the Board of Trustees.
Right, it has nothing to do with the board. It's really, um, yeah, like Kathy said, it was money that was raised and...
But where I'm going with this is every time we need to fund something, we should keep in mind that we have access to the Riden account fund.
We don't have access to the Riden fund.
We can't throw on?
We, no, and we have plans for it too with the sync and...
It has to be spent on the children's...
Yeah, specifically the children's room.
I have the wrong fund, that's why we're getting confused. What's the one we just got? Kathy, what was that fund that we just...
The Tibbetts, Jared Tibbetts Trust, and that went into the donation account.
Yeah.
My confusion, I wrote down the wrong one.
Yep.
No problem.
It is fun. Uh, I would like to keep that in front of us whenever we're trying to decide how to...
It's in the donation account.
Yeah.
So it's there.
Yeah.
Yeah, you'll, you'll always see it when I send...
It's always on the report.
Variance report because...
Okay.
It's, yeah. The, I mean, the balance right now is twenty-three, nine fifty-two because of the, the deposit, so.
Okay, fine.
Yeah, so that'll be...
So it's there.
Well, that'll be included with any other donation. It's not a separate, it's not separate just for the Tibbetts.
But we should keep the designation for that.
Trust trust.
Because there was already three thousand and something.
Right, exactly. It's all of the donations that are, aren't like the stipulations that other trusts.
So all of those, those nations in that account are unrestricted?
Yes, pretty much.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Pretty much. Yeah, I mean, there might be someone who says, oh, here's fifty dollars for books, but you know, that's easy enough to just pull, but other uses, yeah, it's pretty unrestricted.
Mary Lou, we, we good or?
I am, I'm good, yep.
Any questions? All with a vote?
Is that the vote?
Yeah.
Is that the vote really?
It is what it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a report, nothing else.
Director's report.
Okay. I tried to make it pretty general because I know we have to talk about the budget, so, um, any questions about the circulation statistics? They're pretty on par, I think, with last year except for overdrive would be definitely one up and so are the passes for November, even though cold time with passes, it's a little bit complicated. Not a lot of people using them. Um, the programming numbers, still great. Any questions about those? Okay, the warrants. Twenty-four seventeen was six thousand, seven hundred and six, six dollars and eighty-nine cents. Twenty-four nineteen was seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and twenty-six cents. Twenty-four twenty-one was two thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty cents. And the total was sixteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty-five cents. And I put notes that, you know, there, there was a bunch that went toward the grant and then a bunch that went toward Ingram. So that kind of fluffed it up a little bit. Um, and then the flooring carpet update, as per usual, I attached the document with the quotations. Um, first rate moving in storage came back with the lowest bids or the lowest quote. So I think that Rebecca is going to go with them. She's gonna have everything double checked, but that's, I think, the choice. So if anyone wants to read their quote, it's the last two pages of the packet.
But I just add one thing to that. I think you had said that if anybody had any questions, they would direct, to direct them to Rebecca. And I did talk to Rebecca this afternoon. And all things being equal, and they are, and that's what I wanted to make sure of, that even though the lowest quote came in seventeen thousand dollars be, below, uh, the next highest quote, they came to the library, uh, they came with recommendations. Uh, the one question I had was the cost, first of all. The fact that they're all, um, prevailing wage paid, and they are. And also who was going to move the bins because that quote did not include removing any bins and storing them off-site. So, and she said that they, that is up to them. They will be removing the crates or the boxes of books as needed for the carpet installation, which she thinks will start in February.
Yeah.
I didn't have a question and maybe you might, I didn't ask Rebecca, but, um, when we look at the first thing, with three vendors that were contacted, only the one, which was the medium-priced one, has met quality requirements.
Right, I saw that.
They, they all have. Apparently that was a...
I, I think he just couldn't check stuff off.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Because that was, I was like, well, wait a minute. Are they gonna just like, here are the books, throw them in a box? Or are they gonna do what we, are they library book? Like, you know, this is the whole sketch.
No, they do it exactly that way. That was, yeah, that, because we had talked about that, you and I. And yet they, they do, they take it that way. The, um, one big difference is the next highest, the twenty-eight thousand and something, um, quote, they handle a lot of libraries that have specialty collections and vintage books, antique books. And they, they have a specialty in that. We don't have that to be moved. So, um, what, I think it comes in at a great price. I'd never thought it would be that low, but it is. And we compared some, my concern was such a great just difference in quotes. And, um, she was very comfortable with it because there are no specialty, uh, collections that need to be canceled in a special way with acid-free boxes and that kind of thing. So, um, we, I think we're good with that.
Yep.
No, the only thing that worries me a little bit is about third quote.
Could you speak up a little bit, Jan? I'm having an awfully hard time.
Being that much slower, I'm just trying to figure out what they're not doing that the other one knew.
They're not taking them off, they're not taking them off-site.
Yeah, I, I do remember specifically Wakefield has a warehouse where they would store everything.
Yeah.
So instead, they'll probably be doing like part of the building and then storing everything on an, in another part of the building and then moving it.
But it will be up to them to move the boxes. It won't be up to staff.
They'll move it for sure. Um...
Well, they'll be coordinating with the carpet company.
Hmm. Yeah, that will all be...
Or Steve will be coordinating with the carpeting, yes.
But the company would have to realize that what they do is dependent on the carpet company.
Yeah.
Yeah, vice versa.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, it is a coordinated...
I think Steve has already been working on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Steve is the project manager on that, so that's up to him.
Okay, so then when, when they came to review the site, Steve was here?
Mm-hmm. Each time.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
How do you feel about it?
I think so. I'm, I met all of them and they all seemed competent, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Knowledgeable. No, exactly.
That's true.
I mean, they, this company is a four point nine overall rating, which is hard to achieve. So it seems pretty good.
Just is so significantly, usually they're not...
I know.
And then, and then not seeing X like, yeah. I know, no, I, I was like, what? Okay, thank you Kathy for investigating.
You're welcome.
We're looking at the library being closed for a week and a half, maybe?
I don't know.
I know we don't know, but we gotta think about the programming.
It'll probably be a, a week, maybe. I, I, again, I don't know. I, I will need a timeline before I can even say.
Yeah, it would be ideal if the, if the library is not closed during February vacation.
Yeah, I don't think, I think it might actually end up being later. Rebecca talked, talked to, Rebecca and I had a talk the other day and because these quotes are coming back later and the decision is being made later, it might actually end up being March, so.
We don't want to...
And it hasn't even gone out to dead for the carpets.
Exactly, yeah.
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 Probably let them know that we would like them to...
Yeah, I'll, I'll, um, send that information to Rebecca so that she knows not to schedule it for that. But I do think it'll end up being like mid-March at this point, so. May, might be warmer. All right, so that is what I had for the reports.
You the vote? I don't, I don't think so. You're not even asking us spending money this time?
Just the budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which is technically for the town. We just need to, we don't have to pay. Budget, all right, everybody. It's budget time. Let me do a fun little screen share here. Okay. And anyone who, everyone on, who's on Zoom see that?
I printed it out, so I have it right in front of me.
Yeah, I'm just covering up the line item numbers because no one needs those. So this just shows the, um, the increases and I will explain all of the lines so that no one has hopefully any confusion. The salaries lines are all locked. I cannot edit them. That is something Rebecca has calculated and they are all already figured into the budget. Um, so I can't edit that section at all. Um...
So they are what they are.
They are what they are. Um, library materials, I know that looks like a crazy percentage, but it went up over ten thousand dollars because it has to be nineteen percent of this fiscal year's budget and the staff increases kind of inflated the budget. So that is what MGL requires. And I, um, we'll have to present that, that's the legal thing. Um, we were asked to level fund anything that we could, so I level funded technology and programs. Um, dues just went up slightly. That does not include the e-content assessment. The e-content assessment I can grab from materials because it's Libby, it's, it's, um, it'll count for that. So, um, training and supplies, they look completely different, but together the numbers are level funded. Um, because we're seeing more and more free trainings or cheaper trainings. And also staff don't really like going through the reimbursement process. So I put the money where it was needed in supplies. And if you'll see in the, the variance report that I sent out, even now, supplies are very low because we, as we keep going through all these successful programs, I'm also using some supplies money for that. Ink, ink is always a big factor. Um, um, book covered material, I definitely have to order that twice this fiscal year so far. So, so the percentages look a little crazy, but together it's level funded.
But we can always supplement those line items with state aid.
Yes, exactly. If we did need something else, um, and I mean, I have a feeling after the grant runs out, considering the programming has been so successful, there will be some programming requests coming up through state aid too, so.
Is the grant going, is it still under the grant?
We're going, we're doing well. I, I included that in the variance report too. Um, it's actually mostly spent at this point. It's like, yeah, two-thirds.
So we're comfortable, if we have to go over, we have, we could get funds from one of our accounts?
Yeah, I, I think that we would be good. Our, our state aid award for this fiscal year is, I think, I had said almost fifteen thousand dollars, which is pretty high for, for us. Um, so that'll be helpful.
No, we don't ever wanna go into it. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear you speak.
I, I was just saying, so we are, we are putting in more under materials because we have to.
Yeah.
Will that increase our state aid for next year as well?
They're, they don't correlate.
They don't, okay.
No, it's, it's circulation based.
Oh, circula, okay.
Yeah, it's circulation based and also based on state funding. So they will come up with a percentage per circulation and that'll be what our state aid is for that year.
Is that the nineteen percent?
Yeah, the nineteen percent is the...
Nineteen percent is what our town has to pay for material, no, for...
Yeah, it's what we have to...
Right.
Pay for the things that circulate or ten percent of that can be technology equipment that's used in the library. So like the patron computers, like a printer, stuff like that. Um...
And that salaries, but...
But exactly, exactly. Stuff that people can check out or use. Yeah. Exactly. So we wanna make sure that we cover our bases and... Which is why, you know, using the state, the library materials for the econ test, assessment will be so great because the e-content assessment went up to like four thousand something dollars, which is, which is, it used to be fairly low. Um, so this is what I have for the numbers. And the, I hope people got to read the cover letter. I didn't, I actually copied and pasted a lot because not a lot has changed except for I did talk about our grant because I want them to know that it's specifically for a purpose and that, you know, they don't see, hey, you have this grant, but it's for early childhood programming and toys and stuff like that. So we wanna make sure that that's known. Yes. Yeah, it's, it's being expended right now as we speak. Um, so I explained the level of funding of training and supplies. I explained the library materials line. They do, they do know this, but, you know, some of the finance board members are newer. So it's good to emphasize it as well for them. Um, mission statement, the same as always because that doesn't change. I added some things to the goals. The goals actually are the same, but I changed some of the wording because I wanted to explain that storytime numbers have increased both in attendance and the number of storytimes we've been having. Um, and having the increase in materials will help us provide, um, reading materials for storytimes and also early childhood literacy. Uh, I kept the stuff about technology. I also explained that we're, we've been starting to work with the COA on technology presentations. Um, I did one, Matt has a few scheduled. And I actually wanted to change the wording from cooperation to in conjunction or, or the collaboration. Thank you, that's what I wanted.
Sometimes the brain works.
Sometimes, but you know what? But otherwise, yes, if anybody has caught any errors or has any comments.
I didn't see it until just now. I didn't go down, down, down into the...
Collaboration, great word, that's...
No, the, the only thing I think we have to be careful of when we talk about state aid and, uh, donation account is that we don't actually figure that in on our requested, required budget because that's going down a road that you really don't wanna go down.
Also for a legality standpoint... Also, for a legality standpoint.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, I mean, we have to have a certain number from the town.
Right.
It's also an MGL standard, it, it's you know.
So we don't wanna ever get in the mindset that we can.
This year, yeah, so.
Right.
Wanna make sure that, um, MGR, MAR, MGR is our, that, that's our initials from, okay, so, MAR, I promise, brain sort of works.
Do we have a date in front of the Finance Committee, Darcy?
Yes, it's February twenty-eighth, I believe, uh, whatever that Wednesday is, I think it's that day.
That's for us.
That would be for me to explain the budget to the Finance Board and for um, people who are trustees who are interested in coming to be there and support.
Right, it's the, the library director who presents the budget and answers the questions from the Finance Committee. The trustees can go as support, but answer questions if they're asked, but, uh, it's base, it's the library director who presents the budget.
Yeah. I know, it's wild, isn't it? It is wild. But does anyone else? No, the numbers are due Friday, so the numbers are very important to talk about. But I, while we're here at our monthly meeting, here is the packet as well.
What's the bottom line change from last year?
So, overall, the total increase comes out to four-point-five-three increase, which can't be helped because of the library materials. Um, everything else is fine, it would have totally been two-point-five or, or less, it's just, yeah, that, um, that library materials line did it. But.
It's a legitimate increase that needs to happen.
It is what MGL requires, so I will. Yeah, I've, I've met with Rebecca and Ellen and already explained how much that increase is and why, and they, they understand.
Excellent, good work, great work putting it together.
Oh, do we have a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-five?
I make a motion to about prove the budget and the cover letter is presented.
Second?
It's fiscal, fiscal, not fist.
Fiscal, fiscal. Jan?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
Lindsay?
You said yes.
Dre?
Yes.
Thank you, and also thank you to Mary Lou, cause Mary Lou and I talked about this before I even got the MVLC budget, um, and she, she and I talked some of these things through, so, thank you, Mary Lou.
You're welcome, anytime.
I hope the next treasurer knows that they'll be talking to me as well about this.
Thank you all.
Thank you, which, any nibbles? A treasure?
Who, who needs to run, how many openings do we have? How many openings?
It's three each year.
I think I have to run again.
Yeah, it's.
That's not what she's asking.
It's on our website, let me stop.
Yeah, Sean.
Never fear. Right.
Yeah, it's on our website. I can't unlock my phone, how great I'm working right.
Government, boards and committees.
If you click it, it goes right to our website, Laurel.
I know, I gotta get them. Here we go, so who's up in twenty-four, Jan?
Lee.
And Lee.
All business? I have a question going back to the minutes. On the Ryan Riden Fund, uh, it was, I don't think we decided or knew if it was gonna come, the sink repair was gonna come from that fund or state aid, state in.
Um.
For what?
I think it was a discretionary thing, but we haven't gotten an exact number yet.
We don't know where the funds are coming from, either state aid or the Ryan, the Ryan, uh, Riden Fund, or the sink repair.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Just looking into it.
Yes, so we don't have that number yet. As I'm working with, well, we're working with.
Yeah, so we're going ahead with the repair, we just don't know where the funds are coming from at this point. Uh, I think we all got, uh, this is on other, you all got a, an email from Beth on the campaign finance report that we all have to fill out, I think most of us did. I thought everyone.
I think that's only for the people that ran, that's an annual thing, for people who run.
Know about that.
She sent it to me.
It sounded like everybody had to fill it out, that was my question I said I had earlier. I, I'm, I was confused by it, um, whether we all have to fill it out regardless, or if, if it, you know, I'd like, um.
You were saying for that, Mary Lou?
I was too.
Yeah, I got it too.
Yeah.
Being bold and said something.
We have to check that out with the town clerk, I thought, I, I took it as the way that it's always been, you had to fill it out after you ran within a certain number of days after the election, if you were up for reelection, and you ran.
That's the last time.
Thought I could be wrong, cause that came to everybody, so.
Yeah, the last time I did it was when I ran, so that's, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I got the email from Beth, and I'll respond to her asking, do all board members have to fill it out annually?
Will you let us, will, will you let us know?
Yes.
Thank you.
But, thank you.
And we have some time, it's through January twenty-second, I think.
Well, I have, I'm going away, so I need to do it before then if I have to do it, so.
Right. Any other new business, Mary Lou, you said you were saving something for the end?
No, that was exactly my question, was about the fuck, campaign finance thing, yeah, yeah.
I have one thing.
Yeah.
Did we, I thought we were gonna wrap up the goals for Darcy's review this meeting, or, I mean, is, is it all wrapped up? Do you have your final thing that you can sign, I, I just wanna make sure the whole thing that.
Right, so.
It was carried over from the last meeting, but it wasn't on this month's agenda, so.
Yeah, um, I think we were going to decide on if the goals should be this fiscal year or like, next calendar year, something like that, I, I mean, I think it would make sense that they're this fiscal year, but I don't.
I think one of the questions was some of the goals are we gonna split timeframes? I think it was just the, uh.
Yeah.
Is there a date that this has to be completed, or it's just?
No, um, this is a, that's a board decision.
Yeah, I didn't get a chance to.
Well, since it's not on the agenda, why don't we table it, I suggest we, I move to table it till the next meeting.
Yeah, so be more prepared.
I just wanna get it done.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
You, you'll have your final copy and
Yeah.
And all that, it just needs to be taken down.
Yeah. Just trying to find.
I'll add it on. Anything else? Okay.
If I talk to myself, I remember the words.
Do we wanna wrap up early?
Comments from the public?
Uh, comments for the public.
Anyone here?
Uh, motion to adjourn?
So move.
So move.
Who's in second?
Second?
I think Mary Lou seconded it.
Okay. Jan?
Uh, yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jay?
Yes.
And Barbara, yes.
Lindsay, can I ask you one thing? Are we still on?
Yes, you want me to stop?
Lindsay, this is Kathy, would you call me at some point between today and tomorrow? You were looking for a rain barrel. So just give me a call and I'll talk about it.
Okay, I'm gonna stop the recording.
Alright, everybody have.